All right, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It's Thursday, June 17th, 2021. It's 5:31 PM, and we are in the work session room. As authorized by Section 551-071 of the Texas Government Code, this meeting may be convened in post-executive session for the pursuit of confidential legal advice from the city attorney at any agenda item herein. The City of Raleigh reserves the right to reconvene, recess, or realign the regular session or call the executive session or order business any time prior to adjournment. If you'd like to provide comment for the meeting, then if you are not attending in person, please send an email to citizeninput@rally.com. By 3:30 PM the date of meeting, you can specifically state which item or agenda you are referencing. Your comment will then be read into the record within a 30-minute time period. For in-person comments, registration forms are available inside the building. Call the meeting to order, and I'm going to read both items into the record, if that's okay. Item 2, review strategic plan and developed goals for fiscal year 2022, 2023. Then Item 3, review revenue estimates. So I'll start with, did we get any citizen comments?
We did not.
Thank you. You were going to make sure I did that. Any comments, you all are employees. All right, so we can move into the agenda items, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Guys, keep eating, and I'll go ahead and start talking. So tonight, we're kicking off what I guess is our budget-strategy conversation, strategic plan discussions that we will have tonight, as well as again on June 25th and 26th. So as you know, there's a lot of discussions that we have early on, so that if there's any, you know, specific input or feedback that we get from council, we make sure that we address those during the month of July. Because in July, we're really to the point where we already start writing the budget memo and putting together the books and things like that. So what we wanted to do was to kind of have a kickoff at the 30,000-foot level. You know, what is it, you know, we have a strategic plan. What is it that we would like to accomplish at council's level? You know, staff has a work plan, and it's a mix and match of things, but a lot of it are things that we know that have to be done in that year. Some of it's recurring stuff, you know, have a great audit, you know, with no findings. Okay, we're going to have that one every year just simply because it's such a large process, and it takes a while. But on the other hand, there's other routine things that we also include. But this gives us a chance to manage, you know, staff's job, you know, their mission. So what we need to hear from is council. Why is this important? Because your work plan can lead to the need for additional resources or for us to reallocate resources to accomplish. Now, I had asked everybody to bring about four to five items. I'm not going to hold you to that, but I was just trying to give some general idea about what we were doing. And then what we're going to do is go around the room, and we're going to write down those items and then put those up on the wall. And then, the goal is that we then will score. You will give, we will give each person a sheet of these, basically to use 10 of them, and you will go around and you will score those or you will rate those or rank those on the projects you feel like are the most important, you know, that we accomplish in the next two years. Don't worry about whether it's this year or next year. Worry only about, we're going to focus on that for the next two years. So I gave you all kind of a practical thing, you know, complete fire station number five or the Sapphire Bay Fire Station, you know, in two years. Because in two years, the resort is supposed to open up. So that's a key objective or goal that we need to accomplish, and probably is an easy one. I'm not going to tell you, you know, stay out of the weeds or, you know, don't address, you know, staff-related. Because I don't want to, you know, to, I guess inhibit the discussion, the free-flow discussion that needs to occur about what you believe is important. You know, it could be staffing issues. It could be, you know, addressing issues with, you know, various master plans. It's about, you know, we need to fix this street. I mean, you know, let's talk about those. But remember, when you rank them, that's how we're going to end up with a top-whatever list. And here's what I mean by that. Tonight, you're not going to decide whether it's a top-10, top-12, top-8 list. You're going to have 20, 30 items on there, maybe more. What we'll do is, as we get through the 26th, then you've heard from staff, you've heard from each other, you've had a chance to think about your, our strategic plan and what we need to be doing to move the ball forward. And then, once you know realistically what we may financially be able to afford, that's when I will circle back to that. You'll already have the prioritized list. And what we're going to do in that last thing we're going to do on Saturday is we're going to decide where is the line? Is it top-8, top-9, top-12, top-11? That's, so we're not going to decide that tonight. We're only going to decide what's on the list, and then we're going to get your vote for the things that you feel like are the highest priorities. So we're going to start off with a very short presentation just basically to kind of get everybody back familiar with what we're attempting to do with the strategic plan. It'll include the priorities and the strategic goals, and then we're going to jump straight into the exercise.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes, sir.
Remind me, I think we weren't going to do full-on department presentations, or we're going to do...
We are.
We are going to do those. We're going to do those on Thursday to Friday.
Friday, yes. So essentially...
That will add to our list?
What's that?
We can add stuff to the list? That, that's not the final list. We'll be able to add stuff to the list.
That's correct.
Okay.
Now, if we add stuff to the list, then we may have to prioritize some stuff, but the discussion is intended to be ongoing. Now, what I would like to do, and this is ideal, it doesn't always happen that way, when we're through with the 26th, I really want final direction on what I need to do, my staff needs to do in the course of July. But if there is something that we feel like we need to do some follow-up on, we'll try to do early in July to make sure that by the time we get to the point where we have to finalize, you know, the city manager's recommended budget, we have a chance to do that. Okay? Any other, good question. Any other question before we get started? All right, so let's just jump right into it. So, you know, our strategic plan was adopted September 2018, and, you know, we have a vision, a mission statement, we have values. And then what we did, council in approving the plan included seven strategic priorities. Govern transparently, inclusively, ensuring a safe community, strengthening neighborhood livability, enhancing quality of life, fostering economic vitality, investing in transportation and infrastructure, and promoting operational excellence. So our 222 budget will include that, and all of our planning for the next two years will be focused around what we come up with in these action items. So just a reminder, so in the, when council adopted the vision statement, the mission, the values, the strategic priorities, they included goals. Now, goals are broader objectives. They are, you know, these are things, you know, in the next 10 years we want to do, such as, you know, a value-driven culture. Okay, so that's not something you maybe you accomplish overnight or in one year. So these are things that we want to accomplish over the next 10 years. So these are goals, and then we stop at the goal level for council. Then you have our action plan. So every plan has an action, a list of action items that staff works on. Again, some of these are very high-level things. Some of them are very, almost basic things that we've got to do every year. We provided that to you ahead of time just so that you can see them, so we won't go through all of these in detail. But it really is just to kind of get us thinking about, you know, those goals because ultimately, every item on your action plan should be able to be tied back to a priority and to a goal. And if not, then the question is, why would we spend time and resources doing it? So for govern transparently, it's, you know, governing in a policy-focused, responsive manner to emphasize active involvement of well-informed citizens and build trust by removing barriers to information. So as y'all know, we've done some things over the last couple of years. We've made our website mobile-friendly. You know, we've taken some additional software. So there's a lot of things that we do every year, and quite frankly, not all of that may always be, you know, familiar. You may not even realize that we do these things, but we're all trying to move the ball forward. What we want are those big, big, you know, what they call hairy goals, so to speak. So that's what we're going to be looking at for the next two years. The next item, ensuring a safe community. We have some particular challenges with this. So as you know, we received a grant for, to hire nine additional firefighters a couple of years ago. So this is the last year that we received this three-year grant, so this is the last year we received funds. So that means next year, we have to pick up 100% of the cost. We've been planning for it, and so we're prepared to do that. But, and then also, we have, we got a new grant to hire additional officers, or additional firefighters, and, you know, and that grant will come due in three years. And then we'll have, it's a full grant, 100% grant, but at the end of three years, we got to be prepared to take that up. If we're going to make Sapphire Bay successful, we got to be able to provide police and fire protection. And we also are still having conversations about, you know, the resort and the conference center. So all those discussions are still in play. So these are things that are particular challenges for us that we need to stay tuned into. Strengthen neighborhood livability. This is really about, you know, making Raleigh a community. And even within that, each neighborhood is a community. Some of them have well-established HOAs, and they take care of business, you know. A lot of them they do. They fix their streets or they, you know, they make sure they have block party, whatever it is to make sure they're connected and engaged. You know, we want to make sure that our neighborhoods are safe, walkable, welcoming, well-designed, and they have a diverse range of housing choices that add less than value. So some of those goals that we evaluate, we value, excuse me, are existing neighborhoods. So that means doing things to those neighborhoods to improve their quality of life, which could be adding a park. It could be adding a trail. It could be connecting one. It could be, you know, reconstructing their streets and, you know, making it more walkable. So that is really what this priority is all about. Quality of life. So this comes back into things like our, the fact that we live on Lake Ray Hubbard. And, you know, how do people connect to that? How do they get down there and get onto the water? You know, things like our park system and our trail system, you know, and making sure that people have activities here in Raleigh that, again, make them feel like this is a place they can call home. And as you know, one of our taglines is, you know, work, play, and live. And so that's something that we need to remain focused on. And, you know, we just had an election, and Proposition B failed, which was about these items, these type of items. But again, you know, we need to figure out why. We need to figure out what it takes to fix that because we don't want to lose ground on some of these important additions. Fostering economic vitality. So, you know, one of the big, big things that are going on, obviously, is Sapphire Bay and, you know, billion-dollar project over the next five to seven years. But at the same time, we have the great unknown, which is what is going to happen to the North Shore. So economically, one of the things that I keep thinking that for two years that might be important would be to, you know, establish a catalyst project for that area out there so that we can kick that off and then build on it from there. You know, we've done that in several other economic opportunity areas, as we call it here in Raleigh. And I think it really is help, you know, as we've seen development come and start to build there. So this is a very important part. This is where, you know, quite frankly, we get jobs from. This is where people can spend their money in Raleigh. Maybe even bring people into Raleigh to spend money. You know, all of that benefits our community and benefits our residents. Investing in transportation and infrastructure. This is probably one of the most obvious areas that people can see. They can't see water and sewer lines, but they certainly can see roads. They can see alleys. They can see, you know, the quality of at least the above-ground infrastructure. And, you know, there's a lot related to this. Do you remember the Community Investment Advisory Board, the work that they did on it? Some of those items made it to Proposition A and were approved. We got our work cut out for us. There's a lot of infrastructure that needs to be replaced in this town. And quite frankly, you know, even if we were to do $60 million every three years, it probably still ain't enough to get to all of it. And then, as we know, some of our older neighborhoods will continue to deteriorate, and then you'll have to end up replacing their infrastructure. And then promoting operational excellence. This is probably an area where there's so much visibility, and you wouldn't think a lot of this is back-office stuff, and that's true. But, you know, the first time we have a bad audit, it's going to be public. Okay? So every year, I, you know, I bow to Wendy and her team because they do such a fantastic job in that. But again, the public doesn't really see it until we bring it in front of council and say, here it is, got it. So this is something that we have to work on almost all year. The budget process is almost all year. It's a nine-month process, very easy. You start talking about it in January and actually start working on it around March. And you have to do that when you have a 100-million-plus budget. Become an employer of choice, you know. There's a lot that goes into that. It's not always just about paying what people might think it is. But in a competitive environment, that is one of the things that is a huge challenge, particularly in DFW. If you're the only city within 100 miles, then you know what? Maybe it's not such a big deal, but it is here in this market. You know, investments in, you know, upgrading our facilities. We know that, our guess is that somewhere between 10 to 20 years, maybe around that 15- to 17-year mark, we're going to hit full build-out. And when that happens, that's going to be almost 100 million people, if not just even a little bit more. And so we have that window of opportunity now. And if we wait until then to do it, you know, you're going to have limited options in terms of the location, the resources to do it, and things like that. So you have to be planning for those things and preparing for them now. So again, these are the seven priorities council has. Each one has anywhere from about five to 10 strategic goals that council has set. So you have those in front of you. We provided that earlier. So what, I'm not going to ask you necessarily tonight to be able to quote scripture on the priority and the strategic goal. But if you have a pretty good sense of, I think this fits in priority 1, priority 2, then that's fine. What I'm going to ask you to do tonight, we're going to take turns just going around the things you would like to see in the next two years, and then maybe just a little commentary, whatever you want to be able to say about it, why you think is important or critical, why it has to be done. Because in part, you're thinking about this. Your compatriots are going to vote on what they, what projects they think are important. And it could be when the entire list is up there on the wall and you start seeing it, then they may have been able to persuade you a little bit on a particular project that they think maybe is expanding broadband access. Maybe it's something else that is more important and maybe even some of the things that you brought up. So that's some of the things that I just wanted to kind of touch on. There might have been one more slide. Yes, this is the exercise itself. Again, I'm not going to hold you to four to five items. Staff is going to scribe all the proposed action items. We're going to write it on the easel. We'll put that up on the wall till we have them all. Then we'll take a short break, and then when you come back, we'll give you the, what I call the voting docs, which is just essentially these coins. And we'll go through the list, and you'll vote.
So Brian, so are we going to go one by one and have all of our items? Or just go around, everybody say one, and then go around, everybody say two?
So, okay.
And then my second question, which I prefer the latter because I think it gives everybody a chance. But like, if we start with Lake and he says something that's on my list, I'm just going to cross it off and not say it again, correct?
That's correct. Yeah, what we want to do, the first part of the exercise cannot be done wrong. Basically, it's whatever's on the list, whatever you think is important, we'll put on the list.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we weren't all saying, well, we, I think North Shore is important too. I mean, we've already got the list, so let's just leave it on the list.
Yeah, I think that's good. Now, Mayor, I want to make sure I understood the part of it. What I was going to do is take turns going around until everybody's...
Yeah, Blake says one thing, I say one thing, Matt says one thing.
That's what I would like to do.
I like that.
It doesn't have to be your highest priority.
That's exactly right. That's exactly right. And then, we did provide a few examples, just some of those, just to get us thinking in the right area. And again, what will happen tonight, we're not going to prioritize them tonight. Staff will take that, take them down to the easel pages, and we'll compile the final list. Again, we're not ranking them in terms of where the cutoff is. We're only ranking them in the terms of your scoring that you're going to provide. What council will do...
So they are prioritizing, right?
That's what I mean. And that, you are prioritizing tonight. And then what will happen is, so again, on the end of the second day, we'll have our cutoff, you know, where that is. Okay? We good? All right. So let's go ahead and get started.
Matt has to go first because he went last the other day.
Well, I thought you would go clockwise, so why don't we start with Brownie? Is that okay? Start to the... I don't think there's any H's, so...
It's already six o'clock.
Brownie, do you mind one person?
No, I don't mind. I would say conduct one police department, citizens' police academy. I actually think they should do two a year, but I think they're expensive.
You said a police academy?
Yeah. Conduct one. Well, that's what it says here, conduct one police department, citizens' police academy, okay? I think, that's what I said, I think it should be two a year because, but then again, they may be very expensive.
Are you saying something different than what we currently do and have a plan to do?
We've been doing two a year.
Right.
This says, conduct one police department, citizens' police academy. I would say two a year. Unless, I know Fire Department does one fire academy a year, and the reason is expense of the fire academy. So they can only do one a year. So, but police has always done two.
I always ask you for clarification if you were asking it differently or something in addition to what we currently do.
No, it's just on here to conduct the citizens' police academy, but it says one.
They want to do one or two?
Two, two.
Okay. Sorry.
Yeah, it says one on its list, but I would say two.
I mean, we're strategizing about stuff that's not necessarily on the list, but...
He said go by the list.
No.
Now we get... No, I want to hear from you guys. We all are doing this list. We provided the list to you to see what's already on there from staff's perspective.
We're already doing that.
All right.
Don't worry, anyone.
I need to go back home and wake up.
All right, let's go to somebody who's...
Yeah, go to somebody who's left-handed.
I believe I'm Ronnie. The digital version of me.
So are we taking that off? Because we already need that.
Yeah. Take it off?
Take it off?
All right. Ms. Pam?
Well, I'd like to see us become an employer of choice. And we want to keep people, retain people, and just train them for other cities. Or would you put that on there?
So here's my question. So that already is a strategic goal from council. What we're looking for are things, specific things that we would do in a two-year period. So how could we move the ball forward on that? So is it, what's that? Okay. So that would be one thing out of maybe a dozen things that are important to employer of choice. So is that an area that you would like to see us address?
Yes. More money for it, if that's okay.
Or maybe make sure our pay is competitive?
Competitive.
Not just say make more money, but make sure it's competitive.
That's why we got more money, make it...
Is that okay to word it that way?
Okay, so I suspect that tonight, since I'm left-handed, it's the only reason I'm going to say this, is that there may be time, we may write this down just to get it up here, but we can word smith later. All right? Okay, so competitive pay, okay?
I want to hire a downtown manager.
Downtown manager?
Downtown manager to encourage economic development, bring together business, and promote community events.
I love it. Look at that, we just gave you positive encouragement.
That's what happens when you wear shorts. Okay. Mark?
I would like to see us put some significant investment into the coldhouse. I believe that it is a hugely underutilized community asset. Many cities around us have a historic home like that, and it's well taken care of and restored and utilized by the community. And ours is truly barely usable. And I think there would be a huge, a huge interest from the community to do that.
You can ask me, I'm probably going to say no.
And I don't know what significant would be. You know, because I don't know what the cost would be.
Maybe sufficient or appropriate or, you know, what it needs.
Yeah. It needs a lot. What it needs to be usable and to be an asset that we can be proud of as a community instead of, oh, you can't go in there, you know, it's basically condemned.
Okay, all right, very good. Thank you. Matt?
Develop a long-term strategy for the golf course.
Gasoline batch. I'm not even...
But you're quite developing it for us.
Well, it's just two years, right?
Two years.
Two years. It's going to take two years to...
Can somebody else scribe?
Here, I write, and you stick them on the wall.
I'm asking for you to scribe.
No, because I'm left-handed.
Because you block it when you write.
You're not changing your way around the things that I want to do.
You can say no, like this house.
We can add that to the story.
Who drew the happy face out of the door?
That's so you.
Well, I think people will...
That's him. He drew the happy face, and it's his Santa beard, in case you wondered what the red pointy thing is.
But he draws like Santa beard.
That's so you, you would have drawn it.
I did not draw it. He drew.
He's a hip Santa.
He was sticking the green dots to the whiteboard, and I deleted it, so he put them on the paper.
Okay.
You can finish me, but...
Tammy?
I established internal audit department. About two years ago.
Yeah. Or was it three? I forget.
All right, very good. Lake?
Yes. Continue to make more investments into public safety to increase staff in PE, FD, and dispatch.
You have to write faster.
We're just waiting to see what she tried.
We're starting back with Brownie now, for a second?
Oh, I'm sorry, Brownie. Increase the capacity of the animal shelter. There you go.
There you go. That's good.
Might build a bunker for the low levels.
Huh?
Somebody could build a bunker.
We could build a rooftop resort.
We want to... Brownie's backyard.
It's a little wet. Ms. Pam?
Well, let me see. I'm just thinking about the street, about the infrastructure. I can't even read that. It looks like a bunch of...
Well, I was thinking about, I know Matt doesn't like, the alleys.
Add more alleys?
I'm not cleaning them up. Yeah, add more alleys.
Yeah, add more alleys.
Add more?
So maybe increase investment and alley improvements.
Alley improvements, yeah.
Okay.
I'm not going to put a sticker on that, I'm sorry.
I got an alley, it's like we don't know that already. We already know that. You got it.
Okay.
Protect critical infrastructure. So that means from IT standpoint of hacking, we want to continue our investment there. That means that we add generators where we need to, to ensure power supply, security features, whatever we need.
Are you trying to stack a vote?
I know, I haven't gone like the-
A, B, C, D.
So, just say, if you're, if you're going to be overly broad, it's going to be really hard for us to figure out what to do with it. So if anybody says improve the city, and we're done tonight, well, okay, that can work.
Well, that's your, that's your generator statement.
I know, but you, but you did, you specified kind of the areas that you were talking about, so that helped, thank you. Okay?
We got such positive feedback this time was here.
How quickly it confirmed. I, I want to see more shade structures over our playground equipment.
It's going to be hard to prioritize.
It is.
I want to draw it, yeah.
Um, this one's kind of related to what Blake said, it's a little bit more specific, is to fully staff the detention center.
Complete development of both. You could have said it before me.
And when we get back around to you, Matt, you can say with trees.
Mine is going to be make necessary investments, or additional investments in our waste, our water, in wastewater distribution system to keep it fully operational. This also includes installing, well, we've recovered the backup generators, but also replacing those outdated distribution lines that we keep having problems with.
Loop systems.
Let me clarify something. Did, did we not just approve the backup generators for the service stations?
Not yet, it's on the list, and on the, on the second day, we're going to talk about how we're going to allocate our ARPA funds.
Yeah.
But it is, I've already expressed to you guys, it is one of the priorities that we're going to recommend. But no, council has not yet approved that because we hadn't-
I'm going to-
It's talking about-
We just approved two water. So, last meeting or the meeting before, you guys approved two water station generators. Without one more, hold on.
Oh, that might be a longer.
She told you to sit down.
She did.
She's the only one that can do it.
He did it too. He sat down.
He's a smart man.
Brownie?
Public boat rent.
Yep, I had that on my list.
All of us are crossing off on that?
We'll stick with that one.
See, you can get them higher on the board too, so this works out for, I can get more on a piece of paper, and you can get more-
I'd like to see you jump.
No, you don't. Want to see me jump.
Uh, Pam?
I don't know, since he's distracted now. I'm trying to, because he took mine. Huh? He took mine, so I'm trying to figure out another one. What else do you have there? Yeah, go to Whitten.
My next one is to complete the overhaul of the RDC and ordinance.
It's so funny, because I didn't have several of these on my list, and all of them are important.
Yeah.
I think all of our-
Why do you do this exercise?
More than it, I got everything. Infrastructure.
Uh, I want to make sure that we allocate funding to maintain the sixty-six landscape features. And whether that's, I imagine it would be a combination of just paying someone to contract or maintain it, but also for plant replacement.
What about the monuments too?
So it's not just the, you're talking about the landscape in the middle too?
I am, yes.
It's so good, yeah.
Yeah, and we, and we have to maintain it, it's like, it's like a picture that we hung on the wall in the entryway to our, to our city, and it's got to look right. It's got to.
My turn. Uh, I would like to explore also the possibility of park dedication ordinance. I know we have a park proretta ordinance, but as you grow out North Shore, we have no public park space over there, and the best way to do it is through park dedication ordinance, so that we make sure that we continue to have parks on that side of town as it develops out.
That's good, man. That is really good.
I'm passing that off right now.
You can add it to Alice.
He's been eavesdropping on Monty Manol's phone calls. We just talked about that.
I want better promotion of the city.
Marketing.
I want a marketing person who promotes the city, and the right man.
Mine is invest in emergency management and planning, so establish a emergency management fund so we can not only be equipped during disaster, but have enough money for multiple trainings throughout the year with staff, so we're ready to prepare.
I'm going to steal one from your list up there too. I think Sapphire Bay Fire Station and Police Station are very important.
Ms. Pam?
Well, now since we're out of the COVID, I think we should have more downtown events. Doing, doing more downtown things now, because-
I want to continue exploring options for Miller Road Bridge.
I took mine off.
For what?
Miller Road Bridge.
All right, you guys should cross that off.
Yeah.
When you say after those, if you need funding sources?
Yes, funding options.
Could you put that up?
Well, and, you know, if necessary, that can include building consensus with funding partners. Including the city of Dallas, you know. If something like that could happen, it's going to take time to build.
It, it takes concerted effort.
Yep.
Focused effort.
Focused, that's a good-
You know, we used to have funding allocated for the entryway improvements that are along the major corridors that don't have an HOA. That would be a really economical way, I feel, to get buy-in from neighborhoods to improve the appearance of our entryways to the neighborhoods. I don't think that we still have that funding, because that was through, that was through leases, through part of what she was doing.
Well, we still have the annual amount of, where is it, twenty-five thousand dollars is what I'm recalling. Are you wanting to increase that, or?
Well, I, I guess, I guess what I want to do, and I don't know, I don't recall that, that funding has been utilized.
No, that, that was what I was going to tell you, we haven't really spent those funds.
Right, but, you know, the reason we haven't spent those funds is that, is that we haven't marketed that to the neighborhoods and stuff. They don't know there's money there to spend. So, you know, I'm, I'm fine with the funding amount if it's still in the budget. So, you know, then maybe I change that to, we need to promote the opportunities that we have for neighborhoods to improve their appearance through either matching funds or whatever.
Maybe a neighborhood funding, entryway funding program. We don't have a program.
Yeah.
She wrote program too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was some funding for it, but it just, it was never launched. It was, it was just never properly launched. And I'd like to see that done, I think it would be used.
That's kind of like a Whitty, but more specific, I think next year, we really, really need to put a concerted effort into securing the funding for the Merrick Road Aneater. Now, it's further along the line than Miller, Miller's still-
Sure is.
Not, that is very important, but we've got enough on the ground where, I think in two years, concerted effort to really secure that funding to finish that budget.
Just say we need a co-guido, hit project, meet with Colin Alvin to get in on some of that federal infrastructure. Get on these.
Yes.
Finalize, implement, I mean, sort of a complex, so.
So, I'm not sure how you're going to title this, but, public works needs to look at a couple of, I guess, plans or timelines for our asphalt roads, and what the plan is, when we're going to recondition, or I guess reconstruct them. And also, the upkeep of lane markings or vehicular safety. If you go down-
It's two items off of them.
You want to do that? This is just plans, just planning.
How about that?
I think they're two different things.
They are.
Does that hit your first one?
Yeah. Yeah, the lane markings, I want them to look at, you know, put a calendar or some kind of timeline together, because if you go look down Rallett Road or Dalrock, there's like none, so.
Are you talking about the lane markings?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I probably misunderstood what you're saying.
Does that hit number two?
Yep.
All right.
Ready? I'd like to look into, and this is with Ed Valderas and Front Chief Howard, look into the possible need of our own personal weather station for those reasons.
Paul Raina has one at Shrady Middle School.
Huh?
Paul Raina has one at Shrady Middle School.
Are you talking about a Doppler radar or an actual-
No, a weather station, a nice weather station, monitors rainfall, wind.
But we're going to have to-
You know they're putting those on all the new warning sirens.
No, you didn't come by, I can tell you that.
Yeah, that's-
That's in the plan. And there'll also be one at New Station too.
So, do we take that off?
I don't care about any weather sections.
If you said Doppler radar, that would be equal to-
Oh, we have CASA.
Yeah, that's totally different.
The Doppler radar would be nice, but I don't-
Or the Cyrene. So we call them Cyrene.
Cyrene.
Anti.
Cyrene.
S. Oh, outdoor wire, outdoor warning, Cyrene. I only abbreviate things I can't spell like Sapphire and infrastructure.
You go ahead.
Oh, you want me to go? Um, I want to keep up the pressure on economic development for North Shore.
I just put North Shore, is that?
You can just put North Shore, that's fine, we all know what that means.
Add economic development after, just to make sure that we're, thank you. Martha?
Yeah. So I would like to see more funding put into our sidewalk replacement program. I think that's pretty important, and people use those like trails. Those are pretty yellow ones. We have some pretty old ones that are torn out.
Um, I'm just going to steal one from the list. Have we put the generators and oil stations up there, because I had that on my list, so I want to make sure I get it on the list. Where is it?
Yeah.
It's up there.
What's on it, it's up there.
It says protect critical infrastructure-
That's it.
Power and security, so, but it is a separate item.
We already said it.
I thought you said it.
It was mine, sure it's on there.
Can you say it?
It could be a separate, a separate focus item, I don't know.
Yeah.
That's, that's a lot more-
What about one for the RCC?
Can't write.
Generator, what do you want over there?
The generator?
Just put generators for sewer lift stations slash facilities.
Yeah.
Is it, did you say yours? Okay. Um, I mean, it's obvious, but plan an initial implementation of new facilities. It's got to be up there, it's pretty important.
Okay, you can title this street light retrofit program. And that is, I'd like to see staff look into some programs being used by other cities, about how they're financing or funding their retro, LED retrofit program.
I love that.
And, because I know that there's low interest financing in, offset by reduced tariffs. And then, no, I have to wait to go around.
I got a question. The entries at Rallett that they just built, are they going to be our responsibility to maintain? So would you include that with the median?
I put it on the, well, I put landscape slash walls.
Okay, that's, that is-
And do we have a year on those for the completion?
Probably.
Okay.
Are they going to be lit?
I don't know, I haven't looked sure, I don't have anything.
Are they already lit, they were waiting a long for, I haven't been by at night, so.
Yeah, they're supposed to be, I haven't seen them at night either.
Maybe the outside was, the, the ones on the bottom were, but the inside's not.
Oh. They should all be.
Not at night.
Pam, anything next? Okay, Brittany, give it.
Brownie, that was Miss Brown.
No, I was, I was asking a question, you asked it, I said, Bill. Oh, hang on a minute.
Hi. I, I do have one more thing, Andy. You know, considering that the parks piece failed, is there anything that you feel like was critical on that? Like some of the stuff for the wet zone that we wanted to do? Is there something that should be on this list that failed because of the parks piece?
It's me, I have element trail panel funding, so that's one thing I think is-
That's one for sure, erosion and wet zone are the other two, that, I mean, you have to keep more investment into wet zone in terms of dropping facility and-
I just, I, I don't see making that way until another long cycle, so.
So you want to put, uh-
Whatever we have on there-
We have wet zone, erosion, pervert, trails. There's one more.
I want trails as a specific bullet point, but, you know, whatever Martha's asking right now is a-
Yeah, I, I think wet zone is really important too, for us to keep that up and maintain it, since it's a facility that we charge people to use.
We have advocates coming, they have some law.
Uh, yeah.
The surface.
Uh, no, you're checking.
No, there's a huge hole in the surface.
Yeah.
They just, I mean, you can't have that many kids on it, and it not. So, they're working on that one now. They're just working on getting the rest of it. It's actually Matt, we kind of skipped around a little.
Um, really, the only other one that I had was, and I'm not quite sure how to word it, but it's to, to go out and promote and, and look for tournaments and groups that can come and utilize our parks that can help bring in dollars that can then be used to help maintain our park system.
Become an economic builder.
I don't know how you word that, but there's trend shows that you can go to where softball and baseball, and now even spikeball and lacrosse, and, well, you can go and pitch your city, you know, I've got this and this and this and this.
Thinking we had a good frisky golf course on Kirkwood.
Yeah.
And I grew a car.
That's cheap. People like.
How about that?
Yeah.
Some of our fields are tapped out, we can't have a bunch more stuff come in, we can accommodate now, but there's other stuff.
Yeah, I do think he's talking about bigger than just normal tournament, you're talking about even fundraising type tournaments.
Yeah, well, tournaments will bring in, will bring in big dollars, and if you bring in big tournaments, and a lot of people come in from, now that we're going to have more hotels.
Softball, the old was the other thing we were going to stick up.
And we're, and we're building a second hotel, and we're getting ready to have a whole bunch of other hotels on, and now you can start to work deals with those hotels to provide room rates and things like that. And that is one of the things that you can use as an incentive to bring people into your town, so now they're staying here, they're eating here, and-
I wonder how much they brought in for the goal? Wondering how much they brought in for the total?
Yes, 'cause those are exactly the types of things that you can do.
It was all volunteer work with some parks.
Investigate opportunities.
Slash.
I know I added one, but I'd like us to implement a university program for our internal staff and hire a diversity manager. We're big enough now, it's happening. One or two points. One, it's part of parcel. Unless you wanna manage it. Then I would suggest you make a one bullet.
There you go.
All right, give me a second.
Sixty-six street lights.
Oh, yes.
Though we just had another pedestrian fatal a couple minutes ago on sixty-six.
There wasn't another one, we saw.
Brian?
Yes.
No, there was another.
I know, but not the ones not bad enough, just ask. If there was a second incident, I don't know though.
Right, Brian? This is brainstorming, but today Abbott signed a bill that allows anyone to carry firearm without a license, which means without education. So what about putting on, maybe we could put on a firearms safety use education?
I think he is doing those too, probably. I heard today, Dad said that part of what he's doing is doing free online training. So there's an online element, there's a shoot element, but I had heard that today. I'm happy to add, if you guys agree, but I didn't hear that today.
I was just, it's a concern, you know, as a.
But you would be able to do this online class.
Kinda make people to know what they're doing before they get older.
The great thing about the online classes is that at their convenience, you don't have to schedule a facility, a trainer, all of that stuff. It just, and it's one and done, really. You just make it about it.
So, should he, pardon, you shoot it to Monica?
That's a completion.
Throw up a target. Ms. Pam?
I was scared. I'm to be the last.
Martha?
It's on my list.
Man, Blake? Okay, good deal.
All right, let's see. I wanna check my list, 'cause.
You have a list too.
I didn't miss one. Y'all, you pretty much got most of the fire station we talked about.
I covered it all.
Conference Center. Oh, I wanna, we can decide, but adopt the new agreement with the North Texas Municipal Water District, and you can acronize that.
NTWD.
Yeah.
Really?
MWD.
Yeah.
And we've got North Shore on there.
Is there anything with Garland, so are we gonna do that?
No, we just did that. So we're good with that one. And, let's see. Another one we had on there was develop plan to address Fire Master Plan recommendations.
Oh, the study they just did.
Yeah, so there are some things that we need to be tuned into.
That's a important one.
Yeah, and whether we get stickers or not, we can talk about.
Fire Master Plan, what?
A plan to.
Fire Master Plan, I'm sorry. Develop plan to address Fire Master Plan recommendations.
The plan for a plan.
A plan for a plan.
Yeah.
How about if you invent a fire master plan?
There. Fire Master Plan, recommendation plan.
There's so many plans in there, unfortunately. We need to put that one in the collateral.
Yeah, and we are working on that, and we'll be bringing some recommendations back to you guys on that really, really quick. So, we could put it on the list, but I'm just saying it's more urgent than that. I'm bringing that back to you shortly. The two other items I had on there, but they're already budgeted for and in the works, the Dowrock water line and the Dowrock Highway sixty-six intersection project, so I don't think it needs to be on there, so, but I just wanted to make sure the big ones were picked up on.
You know, we have done so much over the last many years, and then you look at this list and you go, oh my gosh.
How much more?
It's like being, it's like being on the bond committee when you have twenty-five million dollars to spend and you're looking at two hundred and fifty million dollars worth of projects. I mean, it's tough.
That was what it was like this year. You know, they, you know, remember Council gave them about a forty million dollar target, and they said, that's not, we wanna do a fifty million dollar one too, so they gave you two.
Yeah.
And realized, we really wish it would be even more. So, it's a huge constraint.
Especially once you look at the priorities from the department heads, the things that are critical, I mean, they're like heroin pot, and you can't do anything about it.
Well, and some of those are like with a sense of urgency, a different sense of urgency than what we would plan for a two-year period, but, guys, let me just tell you, this is some pretty good stuff. This is what we were hoping for. Some of it is, you know, honestly is somewhat you might say pie in the sky, but on the other hand, if that's, if that's our quest, you know, to achieve that, you gotta start pecking away at it now, you know? So, all right, so here's what we're gonna do. I'll go ahead and bring that one over there as well. And, Nancy, you're okay, yes? We, we got through this list pretty quickly. Oh, I'm sorry.
They not listening, who are we?
But I'm.
We love his little protein.
So what do you think?
I was waiting for you to put it up there.
So, what I would say is that, we had, we had said early on that, you know, we would go through the exercise, take a break. What I'd like to do, because I think we've made, we actually a little ahead of schedule, why don't we, why don't we rank them now, and then take a quick break before we get into the revenue projections? Is that okay? All right, so I'm gonna bring that.
How many dots are you giving us? That's the big question. How many dots are you giving us?
We limited to ten.
Ten.
Ten?
Each one of you will get ten.
Well, there's more than ten things on the list, Brian. There's more than ten things on the list.
For ten.
Let's see, we could sell dots to fundraise for athletic facilities so that we could promote. That's not.
Yeah.
We can make some dots worth some money.
So you can trade the dots, or y'all can.
There's more than ten on page.
I was just gonna give them to.
There's more than ten on page.
No, it's, it's a privilege issue. I trust them.
It's an honest thing.
You trust this group?
I give them more than ten, I'll use more than ten.
I agree with Laura.
You can't give them.
But we'll examine.
She's got them so that we don't get more than ten, and Brian wanted us to be honest. I was like, I agree with Laura.
Just give me a couple pages. That'd be good.
What happened at the community center with the dots?
Can I ask?
Extra dots are a hundred dollars a page.
I'm gonna tell you, people can vote multiple times. So, what I'm gonna ask you is to vote one for each one that you vote for.
That's what happened.
Don't stack, I'm asking, don't stack five of them on just one. So, one, one coin for one vote, and you have ten of them.
Parks Master Plan, or this is your children's plan.
On my own.
Jeff, can you toe on everybody?
Have you, what's he over there looking, everybody together?
Yeah.
Everybody, this is.
It was super funny.
Everybody, maybe a dot.
Amendment or not.
No.
It's supposed to be top secret, I think.
I think, I think we're honest with that.
All right, you have ten, two hours to do this exercise. Two hour?
It'll make us that long at least, I swear.
Hey Laura, we're recording this meeting, it will be up at a different time, correct?
At a different time, yes.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, I already got that question.
So it's.
Brian, thanks for giving us those extra dots, appreciate it.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I remember I did that.
I'm gonna trick you on the way to the board.
I'm sure glad I bought green dots today.
Me too.
All different colors.
Well, you can.
There, you have twice as many as you asked for.
Is that everybody?
Okay, there you go. Okay, guys, let's say, and look, I'm not gonna time you, but let's say roughly five, six minutes, is that all right?
To take a break, any dots?
I don't think I could build these and throw them to the floor in ten minutes.
And remember, you got.
When her, are you doing the revenue?
Oh, I thought we were gonna.
No, we're, we're done with that, so I'll, I'll take up less room.
We were here till twelve thirty the other night.
Yeah. Can't hear my connects, but I can.
I can't tell.
Because I have a running nose, that happens. I'll run around here, I've been for a roll and a half of it.
Playing in New City Hall, you don't know what's.
Brian, he's like, why do you have toilet paper? I'm like, this was school a week ago, when you load.
We could buy you a box of connects.
Yeah.
From the other night.
I bet just ordered me some more, because I've been carrying this around, so.
You're in a little circle.
I don't have any more in the mess.
You know, it worked pretty well, believe it or not.
So you're gonna deliver us really good.
You stopped using one fly.
I'm off to a bad start. I stapled them all, it's okay, I stapled them all.
I really thought you just lost.
Oh no, I've done this too many times.
And we will have notebooks at the next meeting, so I better put those together next week, and we'll put your presentations in them. What is that, next Friday?
Oh, yeah.
What you got?
Look up Pam.
Thank you.
I need one. We're good. I think she's got it.
You don't really think I can read from this one? You're gonna pass out the magnifying glass?
I just want you to have glasses on.
Yes. I don't know where. No, with the glasses.
Mine are old and yours.
Your life. Your life. I'll take it easy, it's pretty and stuff small.
Yeah, I see, maybe.
All right, Wendy, now you.
Okay, well, tonight, we're gonna talk about a couple of revenue estimates. We're gonna hit the general fund and the refuse fund, 'cause those are the ones that we're kind of at the spot at where we can give you some preliminary numbers and kind of somewhat come up with them. This slide, I wish Brian was here. He has put this slide up here for a couple of years, and he loves the slide, he thinks it's pretty, and it tells a story, and I was gonna let him tell his story, but he's not here. But I did look at some background on this slide that he uses often, and just to give some perspective, it is a nice, neat-looking graph to see how much the city has grown in sales tax over the years. So this goes back to nineteen eighty-five, and we've gone from five hundred and twenty-four thousand in sales tax revenue in nineteen eighty-five to three point eight million in two thousand and five, and then it spiked in two thousand and six through two thousand and eleven where we entered into the D.R. Horton Agreement, and over those years, D.R. Horton, that agreement provided us an additional ten point six million dollars over those particular years of two thousand and six to two thousand and eleven. And then, and we hit, we dropped back down to four point nine million in two thousand and twelve, and then shot up to, we've gone up to seven point two million in two thousand and twenty, and we forecast to reach seven point six million at the end of this year. So when you put in that perspective, we've gone from five hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars a year in nineteen eighty-five to seven point six million, what we're expecting at the end of this year. So, a lot of really interesting growth there for the city for sales tax. And you have the same history of Rowlett property tax values also, and we've got this from nineteen eighty-seven to two thousand and twenty-one, and the history of this is that the property tax value has grown over the past thirty-four years from six hundred and ten million in fiscal year nineteen eighty-seven, down there in the bottom, to six point seven billion as of December of two thousand and twenty, for the tax year that we're in right now. And the exemptions really started, you can see from the green shaded area, to take effect in fiscal year two thousand, and they were about six percent of valuation, and they've steadily grown to about eleven percent of taxable valuation today. So that was a neat little couple slides of history, and now I want to also provide you, before we get into the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two preliminary numbers, this slide provides some important background on the valuation numbers that we've got for this year. I wanted to share that D.CAD, D.CAD only reassessed fourteen percent of Rowlett residential properties this year, and sixteen point seven-three percent of commercial properties, and that's the highlighted row there, and this comes from the D.CAD report. For total reevaluation for this upcoming fiscal year, revenue of eighteen point seven-five percent, and this is compared to last year's total reevaluation percentage of fifty-five point two-four percent, and then the tax year before that at forty-seven point five-eight percent. So, when you see tonight's numbers, I mean, this kind of puts a lot of perspective into it. We didn't get a lot of change from last year because the really, the reevaluation wasn't there for this upcoming tax year.
Is there a reason?
Yes, Kenneth Knowles from D.CAD told us that there was, I don't remember what the filing they called it, but there, I believe it was Garland School District and Mesquite School District had filed something with the state, some type of protest, so they focused primarily on Garland and Mesquite revaluations this year.
Okay.
But overall, I think, I think they don't want to penalize. So I also wanted to share with you, over to the right is D.CAD's spring calendar of events, what's coming up. Today, a new supplemental, the first supplemental rule was released with the ARB values on it. I have not seen that yet, it's been a really busy day, but over the, probably the next few days, I will recalculate these numbers and drop that information into our models. So what we're working on tonight, and the numbers that are represented tonight are based on the last, that one that made twenty-second, second preliminary, that's the most recent reports that we received from D.CAD. What's coming next is July sixteenth will be the last day for ARB hearings, and then, and the data to be input into their system, and then D.CAD will have a supplemental role that will come out on, another supplemental role that will come out on July twentieth, and then the chief appraiser will certify the role on July twenty-sixth and release that to the taxing entities.
Can you explain what ARB is?
Appraiser Renew Board, I think it's. So, again, I wanna clarify that tonight's presentation scenarios are based off of that May twenty-seventh number, which is very preliminary, and at that time, they do not report protest values, so we put a lot of assumptions and historical ratios into these numbers and give our best guess of what we think the outcome is gonna be.
Wendy?
Yes.
Has there been any indication from them that they're gonna be able to meet those dates this year?
Yes.
Because last year, they totally blew themselves.
And I think the pressure last year was SB two, everyone was trying to scramble to figure out what we needed to do, and this year, I think they have put in a system and they have assured us that they will meet all the deadlines this year. Do you remember the explanation that Kenneth Knowles gave about the protests on the state of Garland and Mesquite I C, and the reason that they had to focus on them?
It was very technical and.
Okay.
And specific something to them that's not.
Do you remember the explanation that Kenneth Knowles gave about the protests that was on the state of Garland and Mesquite I.S.E. and that, the reason that they had to focus on them?
It was very technical and, um, and specific something to them that's not to us, and that's what I... And it had to do with the school district more than the city.
Yes. Okay, so tonight we're going to present, um, do you eight scenarios, and would like to come away with some type of idea or direction that council might like us to focus on in our budget model, uh, to fund our departmental needs and council goals. All the scenarios are based, as I said, on the pre, the May preliminary evaluations from the CADS, in which we are expecting a 7% increase in Dallas County and a 3% increase in Rockwell County, when compared to the December 2020 supplement, which is the most recent update that we received and we based our January budget amendment on, so that's what I'm comparing to. Instead of comparing to August that had all the protest values and it was uncertain, I felt like we should, um, compare it to what kind of, what we, I would consider the real number in December after the majority of those protests were cleared up. Um, from these preliminary numbers, we have built in a contingency based on historical protests and adjustments, which brings us to a 2.3% overall blended increase in taxable assessed value. Um, this is much lower than the actual increases over the past three years of 12.4%, 9.8% and 10%. That gives you a little bit of perspective of what we're working with this year compared to previous years.
We are talking about, um, existing val- evaluations, not new.
Total.
Total, it includes total, yes.
Ooh, that's how good.
Yeah. Based on the preliminary reports, the tax freeze value is expected to increase 49 million from the December 2020 supplement update for last year's tax rule, and that's a huge jump, last year that increase was 18 million.
Wow, why would that happen?
More people turning 65, more people turning 65, uh, qualifying under the, the freeze.
Let me, let me say something here, because I think it puts some things in perspective. Um, can't remember where we were recently, I think you were with me, Brian, but, uh, went through a whole G.I.S.D. discussion, um, what's happened with their enrollment over the last 10 years. Was everybody in this meeting? They weren't with it?
No.
Uh, you know, 67,000 students 10 years ago, just over 60,000 now. Ooh. And, you know, that's a 10% decrease in G.I.S.D., and when you think about all the growth in the three cities, that's even a more significant decrease. And they've done, they, they brought in a, a demographer and did a whole bunch of study on it, and basically what they found out was certainly Rowlett and, and Saxon, and probably to a lesser extent Garland, were aging in place and were not leaving our homes, and the kids are growing up and, and leaving, and not selling our homes to bring people that are bringing in more families. So there's a lot of discussion about, you know, all this growth, how's G.I.S.D. gonna handle it? G.I.S.D. is not worried about growth, uh, G.I.S.D. is worried about the loss of students. Um, so, you know, I just think, and so that, that's showing in that 49 million, people don't leave Rowlett because we have a great, uh, tax freeze for seniors, so, I don't know, it's just interesting.
Well, and so, you know, you think, you know, let's say that our value was gonna jump 100 million dollars, and then you would see half of it is going to this and not gonna be available for other purposes. Uh, you know, some of it's gonna go to the tourist district, some of it's gonna go to other things. So when all that gets, you know, pecked away at, then what's left that we could use in the general fund or INS fund, um, you know, is limited for...
Okay, so in the, um, so at first glance, we don't have a lot of additional revenue to work with, so that's why we wanted to provide you with some scenarios for thought and discussion tonight. The scenarios are primarily based on the INS rate decisions of whether or not to decrease the tax rate equivalent to the loss of Proposition B, which is about a penny, and/or continue to maintain a consistent debt rate by issuing a tax note, which is also about a penny. And that is, that comes from, over the last several years, council has, uh, we've maintained a consistent debt rate. Last year, we lowered it to the point 203, it was a conscious decision to do that. So now, with the value growth, do we wanna hold that steady again this year? And then with the mixture of the loss of Prop B, what is the combination of all of those scenarios? So, um, with Prop B, the, um, the value, uh, well, I wanted to show the INS rate here, the difference, if we issue the tax note, um, would be the four, the 455,000 dollar column as we go forward, and then the zero, uh, which is scenario A through D, or scenarios if we issue the tax note, and then E through H are if we don't issue the tax note. Now, what I also wanted to mention, that all of tonight's scenarios do still preserve the 10 million dollar debt capacity for the public safety election in May 2022, so that's important to keep in mind. So on this screen, bear with me, um, I'm gonna break all the options down, it's a lot of numbers, so your eyes may be rolling in your head by the time we finish this, but I, I wanted you to understand each one of the scenarios that are on there before we come to the, the dollar impact of each one of them. So, A, A through D represents keeping the value growth and the debt rate through issuing the tax note, while E through F represents shifting it to M and O or to general fund operation funding. And then there are the additional options from there, on the effects of funding, uh, to the M and O rate, uh, general funds rate, and those are highlighted in yellow, and this slide breaks down the effect on the M and O general fund rate for each one of these scenarios. A or E represent keeping the current total tax rate at .745, and thus shifting the one cent, um, Proposition B debt rate loss over to M and O to fund general fund operations instead of reducing the overall rate. In A, this adds one penny, um, for the Prop B debt rate loss over to M and O, and in E, if we don't issue the tax note, it adds the one penny Prop B loss and the one penny debt service value growth over to M and O. And then in B through, uh, B and F represent reducing the current total tax rate of .745 by the value of Prop B loss to .734810, which is about the value of Prop B. It'll just drop the current tax rate straight down to that. B does not add anything from the debt service rate to M and O, and M and O pretty much stays unchanged, whereas F adds, uh, the one penny debt service value over to M and O. And then in C or G, this throws a whole new option in just of adopting the no new revenue rate, which this year so far has calculated to be .74884, which is actually higher than what our current tax rate is set at, and this is almost a half a penny increase from our current tax rate, which could be added to, will be added to the M and O rate. So C, just like A, adds the one penny Proposition B loss to the M and O rate as well as the impact of raising the rate a little, um, by going to the effective rate. And then G, just like E, adds the one penny Proposition B loss and the one penny debt service value growth and the impact of raising the rate a little over to M and O. And then we get to D or H, and this represents using the no new revenue, no new revenue rate as, as the base, and then from that, reducing that rate by the value of Prop B to recognize that. So that would reduce the overall rate to seven, uh, .738. And then for D, this is just like B, which does not add anything from the debt service rate to the M and O, but it does add the, um, almost a half a penny impact of using the no new revenue, uh, no new revenue rate as the base over to M and O. And then H, just like F, adds the one penny debt service value growth to M and O, and then also the slight increase from using the no new revenue rate as the base over to M and O. You got all that?
That was a little, that was a little much.
Yes, I had to type it all up because I thought, you know, you really have to stare at it to figure out what it's gonna do, and so I needed to keep those all those straight.
I think, I really, I really think we need to get a little bit more basic in our questions, but you're probably going there.
Yeah, and one thing I'll say is that it's really just four options, it's just that there's multiple variations of that.
Yes. So, now we'll look at the, we'll look at the M and O general fund financial impact of each one of the scenarios. So this slide breaks down the financial impact of the general fund for each of the scenario, if a tax note is issued to preserve that debt rate and hold it steady. In A, um, the no, uh, no tax rate change, uh, and we shift the loss to Prop B over to M and O, the general fund property tax revenue would increase from the January amended budget, um, by 639,000. If we choose option B and reduce the current tax rate by the loss of Prop B, the property tax revenue will increase by 51,000. C, drop, just, and just use the no new revenue rate, the property tax revenue would increase by 861,000. And then if we use the no new revenue rate as the base and then reduce that by the loss of Prop B, then the property tax revenue, revenue, uh, sorry, will increase by 273,000. And then on the other side, if we don't issue the tax note to hold that debt rate, option A of keeping the rate the same, um, would increase the revenue by 1.1 million, and B, if we reduced the current rate by Prop B, property tax revenue would increase by 528,000. Or option C, if we just use the no new revenue rate, it would increase by 1.3 million. And if, uh, and option D, if we use the no new revenue rate and then drop by Prop B, it would increase by 750,000. So this slide puts the value of each scenario into perspective to the bottom line projected outcome of the general fund funding capacity for departmental needs and council priorities. The fiscal year 22 proposed budget model currently assumes a flat budget, which we define as last year's adopted budget plus ongoing adopted amendments, such as the new positions and personnel raises that were approved in January, less one-time supplements that were added last year, and then plus reinstatement of the fiscal year 21 travel reductions that we made last year to reinstate those back in this year, plus contract and otherwise scheduled increases that we encounter every year for normal contract increases. It does not include employee raises or step increases, this base model.
So, where's the, uh, savings for implementing priority-based budgeting to get efficiencies because of that whole process?
So, in terms of priority-based budgeting, that's what you're gonna see in, on June 25th and 26th.
I understand, but for modeling, we need to be modeling.
So, we are going through an exercise right now, uh, to generate as much funding as we can, um, and we don't know what the number, actually, the, the assignment's been completed, they've turned it in. I have not yet seen the recap of those numbers, but we're hoping it's several hundred thousand dollars, because we, there's other priorities that we need to do to help with that.
That was the whole purpose of PDD, is not to start with where we're at and keep adding to it, but to figure out what we should be eliminating.
So it's a combination approach, and it always will be, but yes, we're having that, we're going through that exercise now because what we're recognizing, you know, E, no matter what scenario we pick, we're very far behind the curve in terms of what we need to do.
Which is all the more reason we need PDD and they are figuring out where we can get the funding we need for other priorities.
Okay, so this, this fiscal year, or, sorry, this budget model expense amount is represented, that base, uh, the base flat budget is represented on the expense line of all the scenarios A through H as the 49,472,994. And then the model assumes the same revenue increases across all scenarios, such as anticipated sales tax and mixed beverage tax increase, license and permits increase, uh, the transfers from other funds increase, and then the other revenue source increases and decreases that we are pretty much gonna, um, net each other out. The only difference between revenue line of all scenarios A through H is the difference in the estimated property tax outcome for each of the scenarios that were shown. So for example, with the preference of council tonight is scenario B, to reduce the current tax rate, uh, by the one cent loss of Prop B, and also issue a tax note to preserve the assessed value growth and the debt rate, the projected amount available for departmental needs and council priorities would be the 811,000. Likewise, if the preference of council is scenario G, the amount available would be the 2.1 million. Again, keep in mind that it's based on the preliminary appraisal values and assumptions due to availability of the, some of the calculation data that we have right now, but it gives a general idea of where we're at for preliminary budgeting purposes. So, what all funding sources are out there, uh, we've provided some property tax scenarios tonight that vary from 800,000 to 2.1 million, but we also have some other existing funds that could be used for one-time needs, such as the 600,000 in departmental requests for capital equipment, but they're not really applicable for ongoing costs such as employee raises to catch up with market or, um, departmental additional personnel requests that'll be represented to you, um, next week.
Can, can we go back to, sorry, the last slide, yeah, right there? There, there it is. So the funding option, just, uh, so you guys are aware, you know, we did get that, um, Winter Storm Electric surcharge, uh, I thought it was 338, 336,000 dollars. Y'all may be seeing articles, um, Lewis McLean, where the cities are starting to get theirs, and some of them are, you know, over a million dollars and, and others are, you know, but it's, it's relative to each city, so, you know, 336 is a lot of money to us, and I'm sure it is to every city. So, um, some of our one-time money, maybe even a portion of the clawback money or, um, some of the other reserves above the estimate, we'll have to end up using some of those funds to help, uh, cover that, but, uh, but even with that this year, we may be, uh, in a position where we'll have another surplus this year and be in pretty good shape. So, I think that was...
Is the 1.7 million a, a number that Richard's gonna go over with us next week? And is that his final analysis of what we need just to catch up to market?
So there's like three options we're gonna provide, one brings us to a zero, uh, median average, one is about half a percent, the other half's about one and a half percent. So it'll be, it'll range from anywhere from, I think, about 1.2 to 2 million dollars. But this was, at the, at the time we were preparing this, this was a rough estimate of what we were probably gonna recommend, but I don't wanna paint you guys into a corner.
I understand, I just was trying to figure out.
Yeah, but this, this is...
It's huge. So now, do we wanna reprioritize our shapes?
Now, do you want red stickers? I can go find some more.
So, so I would say, obviously not yet, but, if you remember, what the goal was at the end of the meeting, uh, next week, would be that, that determines how much we're gonna focus on, and maybe it's only seven items, maybe it's not 10 or 12 or 15, but, uh, because some of them are gonna have significant, um, resources attached to them.
So, I, no, let's, let's just say it this way, our public doesn't focus on M and O and I.S.
Right.
Um, and I understand we need to, and I understand all the reasons we need to. But can, like, to start this conversation, can we just talk about tax rate for a little bit and not separate those two?
Yes.
You know, we're, we're, we're looking down the road at significant, uh, asks to our public for facilities, which are gonna be bond elections, which are gonna increase our INS rate. So, I could care, personally could care less about maintaining the INS rate right now, because that INS rate's gonna change significantly when we go to the public, if the public accepts that. That's just my personal opinion, I felt differently about that in past years, but, to me, we gotta figure out a tax rate as a tax rate and, and look at the future in regards to capital improvement asks, but, I'm curious about your response on that.
So, and before we go around to council, if you don't mind, Mayor, I was hoping to take a few minutes...
Just trying to simplify the discussion.
Yes, I was hoping to take a few minutes to kinda just, you know, salt the ground a little bit, you know, before we got into this discussion, but, so, you know, I think that, you know, we, we've had, um, for six years or plus or minus a little bit, we've had several strategies in play, and, you know, one obviously is to have a market rate, you know, uh, compensation, you know, plan. Another one is that to preserve the INS rate at a certain level, and so we've, we did a lot of stuff around that, including issuing tax notes at times, trying to maximize the bonds we could issue, um, is just, is a combination of, of all those things. But I think the mayor is absolutely right, I think we're, we're reaching a point where, you know, as, as much as we need, you know, everything, equipment and all that, preserving the INS rate, if our strategy is, hey, look, we're gonna put it on the general obligation election and the voters get to vote on that... and the voters get to vote on that, then it's time for them to start making some of those choices. Because I think, and I'm going to say this because I'm partly what's held us back a little bit on it, but, you know, I think we almost have to now move from this idea that we're only going to issue enough bonds to not change the tax rate. Because, you know, I think it's holding us back from what, you know, maybe we needed 100 million dollars over the next three to five years and not just 40 or 50, you know? I mean, you know, maybe that should have been the bolder, you know, hairy goal that we would have had in this particular deal. But I don't think, you know, these little 25, 30 million dollar bond elections, they're a lot of money to the public, but they're dropping the bucket to what our needs are. So here's what I would say. In terms of kind of, you know, maybe where you have flexibility that doesn't really do anything, I think the tax note is one of those, you know? And so trying to preserve the INS rate at that rate, you know, when you're going to have future bond elections, maybe shouldn't be the deciding factor. I think another thing that you need to consider, and this is one I think is really political more than financial or fiscal, is the debt rate loss on Proposition B. Because, you know, it's about a penny. And so the question is, do we try to preserve the rate that way? Or do we let it drop off? And, you know, the public has voted for this particular issue. We won't have Proposition B bonds to issue this summer because of it. And so, you know, do we let the INS rate drop off? So as far as like whether it's no new revenue or any of those things, we're already below what, even if we had not done the disaster deal, I think that we're in a place where my recommendation is is that you consider removing the tax note off your table because we have so many needs. And we have equipment needs too, so.
I'm not worried about reducing the tax rate as a result of not passing Proposition B. Personally, I'm not worried about that. I hear you that it's political, but we got some big operational needs in this city right now. What I don't want to see is an increase in the total tax rate. Because we're going to go to the voters and say, here's all the capital needs we have, it's going to increase our tax rate. We've had the luxury historically of saying it hasn't, it didn't, it wouldn't, but we're not there anymore. But why would we reduce an overall tax rate in the upcoming budget and then go to the public and go, now we're going to increase it by that penny and then does much more? It doesn't make sense to me.
No, pardon me, I agree with that analysis.
I'd keep the tax rate the same and see what shakes out in the budget and get some savings of PBB.
I'd like to see what that looks like, Mayor.
I have really good directions.
I love it.
That's just, that's just me talking.
No, I agree.
I agree.
People are always saying we have the highest tax rate in the county. Yes, we do.
Well, we're not even close to the highest.
The bonds are passing all around us, 100 million.
And we said, you know, we started this conversation, before we started the budget conversation, we were talking about the bond and we all, I think, knew collectively when we did the needs analysis, which is why we funded that in the last bond, and saw what those numbers were going to be, we all knew that this was going to have to something that we were going to have to put out to the voters. You know, we're going to need every penny we can to get those bonds to pass. You know, there's going to have to be a heck of a campaign around that and the needs and the whys and what it's going to do and why it's important. It's not just because future councils want pretty room to sit in. It's way more important than that. So, I agree with that strategy.
Are we done?
Now, a little good news.
Just teasing, let's live here forever.
And speaking of marketing, I mean, really, we just, you know, we need to have some really good professional marketing to help us to sell the bond. I think just posting stuff on the website and all that is not enough anymore. It's just not enough for what we need.
You know, to that end, a little good news we saw at the EDAB meeting Tuesday.
You're on time.
Was that? Rowlett was ranked number.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, go, go.
Rowlett was ranked number three in the state and number seven in the country for household median income to housing rowlet value.
Wow.
So let me tell you what it means. What it means is that, you know, if you live in some areas where the housing cost is so high that, you know, your median income takes five to 10 years just to catch up to the mortgage note, then you don't have resources then to spend money and do other things with it. So in terms of the value, our residents have a lot of value, you know, based on their income that they have and then based on their housing. Anyway, we're going to publish that.
Is that for a marketing person? Because you all don't even know that yet and it was several days ago.
I saw it.
I read it. I did read it.
It is pretty cool.
Yeah, it is.
Pretty cool.
Because all those people are staying here and they're not leaving. All their kids are leaving. Now they got to drive and believe so.
Yeah.
Here, here.
Rowlett or whatever, residents staying in Rowlett longer than. There was some kind of report a few years ago about that. People don't sell their homes as much.
So I know we're going to wait till the 25th to talk about utility revenues, but we have some good news there too, particularly for our residents. So I think we're in pretty good shape that way. But I will tell you, we were squating bullets on where we thought we were going to go this year. I will say this, sales tax is going to save our butts this year compared to what property taxes have done in years past.
It'll be really interesting to see what happens with other cities' budgets in the coming year because everybody's going to be in this scenario.
That's what S B, getting back to S B two.
Imagine.
No scenario.
Because.
We'll have that whole online sales tax thing.
Oh, yeah. But I was talking more about, you know, the property tax valuations are not going to be big this year in any cities, so.
Mayor, I think we're done. That was, I must say.
Oh, is that a minute? Sorry, Robert, he's going somewhere.
Oh, I'm sorry, I looked at.
And I just want to make sure, council, please, I didn't mean to.
Oh, good.
Is everybody really on board to that?
Yes. Absolutely.
Hi, Robert, we're glad to have you with us.
Thank you. Glad to be here. Yeah, who wants to talk to refuse?
All right, trash talk, man.
Luckily, this one is rather quick and it's also good news here. So discussing the refuse fund, we're in the midst of a seven-year contract that was awarded to FCC Environmental Services that began on October 1st, 2017. The contract provides for a rate increase or decrease based on a formula that's calculated on the CPI and also the diesel fuel prices. That contract adjustment is capped at 5%. In 2019, it hit the cap and FCC requested it be adjusted to the 5% rate increase. They did the same in 2020, also that calculation hit the cap again. Last, current year, rather, the calculation provided for only a 0.15% increase. FCC requested that and we gave them that. For next year, the calculation provides for a 3.84% decrease in the rates.
How deep is their service?
So this is the rate.
Probably COVID-related to some extent because remember the way the dates work, sorry.
So it's diesel fuel. So yes, this is the calculation. So these are, again, these are weighted. So the CPI weighted rate increase is 0.86%. The diesel highway rated weighted rate is negative 4.7%. So the total adjustment there, when you add those two together, is the negative 3.84% for us. Again, the contract rate capped to the 5% increase. And I also want to mention that that contract is the largest, but it is not the only expense in this fund to provide these services. And we also have the household hazardous materials collection contract that is going to go up by $20,000 fiscal year '22. We had those mid-year personnel increases, which add 7,600 to the price of these services. And then there's also an increase in '22 through general and administrative transfers in the amount of almost, but not quite, $82,000.
Robert, can I say something here about the hazardous waste collection costs? We found out when, the one and only time that we partnered with CERT to do the collection, that probably 95% of what we collected was paint. And of that paint, I would say probably 90% of it was latex. Latex paint does not have to be taken to the hazardous waste collection center. All you have to do is pop the lid off of it, let it dry out, and it can be disposed of with your regular trash. If you want to dry it out quicker, you can put kitty litter in it. It will absorb it and then you can throw it away. So many people don't know that. I mean, I consider Robert as probably one of the most self-educated people in our city as far as continuing education for an older person. And just every once in a while, I put something on Facebook if someone says they took things over there. And I find out almost every single time they're taking latex paint over there. And, you know, I know that we get charged by how many trips and all that stuff people bring over. So this is going back to that marketing or education campaign. How do we get that information out there? Because I think we could greatly reduce the cost of what we're spending. You know, I know it's not a big budget item, but to me, it's just wasted money that we could put somewhere else. Because I promise you, most of what people are taking over there is paint. And it's latex paint.
True force of that number, it's latex paint.
Yeah, and it is latex paint that hardly anybody uses old ice paint anymore. I mean, latex looks so good and it does the job and it's cheaper, easier to use and clean up from. And I just know from my own personal experience and from feedback that I've gotten from other people that most of that is latex paint.
Excellent work, Martha. The percentage price decrease, you know, well looking to benefit, you know, our citizens, that is not, that's not an average year. You know, you're basing this price change off of something that is, you got to throw everything out last year. They're going to be dying. Gas prices are already back up.
I'm going to have to, they service us with price decrease when they can't service us today.
I mean, I hate to say it, and I mean, they're, and then 5%, we'll definitely have the 5% increase going into next year and that probably won't even be enough to catch up. I don't know, I think we have to have a real hard conversation with them because, about service levels, about where they are. Because if they're hurting and they're unable to pick up our trash, that's on us. I'd rather give them an increase if it meant it was going to increase service level than what they are based on dropping it by 3.84% based on what I consider skewed numbers in an off-year. I don't know, I'm just throwing that out there. It just seems, it's not a normal year.
Yeah, I agree with you there, Matt. And also something that really surprised me when we got the report from them that their collections, their bulk collection had doubled in volume from what it had been the year before. And so then, you know, you start looking at that. I mean, if you were running a company and you had to do twice as much work on the same amount of money and then you look at a decrease and there's a point where it just doesn't make sense for you.
Well, it's totally screwed up. We should not be allowing unlimited bulk at Curzon.
I agree with that.
I mean, I cannot believe the piles people put out there.
I agree with this.
You're having meetings right now.
Yes.
I think we need more information before we do.
Yeah. Yeah. And we've talked about stuff like maybe doing a chipper and having a dedicated area here in town where they can go and chip up some of that bulk stuff. So, and besides that, we're filling up our landfill with really organic material that something else could be done with.
There's also, there's some changes that I think would be worth, you know, having, having Hill and Landfill come over and talk to us at some point because there's some changes going over there.
Yeah.
Where in the future they may be able to accept that type of material again at some point. Or we deliver it over there. There might be ways for us to be able to help with some of that in the future most in conversations.
But you know, we had a really good practical example of what you were talking about, Martha, with the chipper, you know, after the tornado. So, you know, we piled it all on private property that we have permission on. And then once we were done, then we went out and chipped it all. And then we delivered that to the landfill. And when we did that, I know we saved just tons of money.
And time too.
Is that?
And time, recovery time for our city too.
So I know this is maybe a different, totally different conversation we should have, but my concern is, yeah, bulk has been a pretty, they've had some pretty bad service, understandably because of the increase. But they're not just falling behind in bulk either. It's also been just regular truck pickup.
Yeah, it has.
And so, you know, I don't think that we should, not that it's rewarding them, but I don't think we should say, no, keep your, keep that money because we want you to do better when they signed on that contract and that's their fault for not thinking about different scenarios. So that's kind of where, I hear both sides though, but.
Yeah, I mean, last year was just so messed up because of the pandemic. And, you know, one of their reasons that it's affecting regular trash pickup is not being able to get enough employees to drive those trucks and empty that trash too. So they've had a real, they've had a real issue with just getting enough boots on the ground to get the work done.
Another thing too is the normal, sorry, I'm sorry, 45 minutes. It usually takes them 45 minutes to go out to the dump and get dumped and get out of there. With the rain, they haven't even, you'd never get in the dump. And if they do, it's two hours. And so that's a problem that I realize is, you know.
It's just that it's.
Supposedly, the landfill says that's over with now, so everything's back to normal. So we'll see.
Yeah, just so you guys know, I'm going to ask Angie to give you all a quick update. She is working with new management at FCC. And they are, they're bringing in some big guns and I just want you to hear from Angie kind of what they're doing right now.
So today, the existing GM is no longer with FCC. They have in one of their top guys from, do you remember where he's from? St. Louis, maybe?
I don't remember.
And his job is to come in, figure out what the issues are. He does this, come in, figure out what the issues are, correct them, and hire the next GM. So they have a number here from headquarters to get that taken care of. They started meeting with staff. They have additional meetings with staff next week. They have already secured at least one outside contract to help with bulk and get the bulk off the ground. And they are working on another. And they are also considering, and this was just kind of general conversation, they have not done this yet, the option of bringing a chipper and taking it to wherever it is, chipping it, and then doing something with the chips, right? So that stuff is all on the table. Gary is working very closely with them. We prepared a memo to them today saying, here's what's going to happen if you are not caught up in two weeks. And the fines that will be assessed, and that will be sent to them first thing in the morning along with the contract. Gary has made them aware that this is coming and that we are going to start holding them accountable. There'll be a tracking system, so I will ask all of you to please send any complaints you get to the CAC so that we can track it because we're going to take the word of our citizen that it happened until FCC can show us evidence on a camera that it didn't. But I have, we have to be able to track it in order for that to happen. So instead of responding to them or responding, send it directly to CAC. That's what Brian and I are doing as well.
You don't want me to text you at 6:30 in the morning?
I sent it to the CAC this morning and one of our CAC workers lives around the corner. So she already knew and had already called him and yelled at him. So, but.
So are we planning on any kind of public announcement? Because, I mean, it's still just.
We're working through that right now and we're trying to get as much information from them before we make a public announcement. So what we're getting is accurate fact. And literally, he was here Wednesday. My days are like this now. Maybe it was Monday or Tuesday. And they have made significant changes from Monday to Wednesday at 5 o'clock. And so I would rather make sure that. And so I would rather make sure that we have really good information when we make an announcement and we say, when you have a problem, call the CAC because we need to track every single concern. But yes, that's coming. I just need as much good information and this guy's running, so.
Are they also, thank you, are they also going to be looking at enforcing on their end the issues with certain kinds of bulk that's being put out there? It's not appropriate.
Yeah, honestly, if I was them, I absolutely would figure that out.
They have a tag system they have implemented in the last couple of weeks. Now, why we didn't do this before, I can't answer that. But, but they did implement, was that a month ago? A tag system that they gave to the drivers that would physically tag, you have improper material, it's not in the right place, we can't access it, there was a car. So literally, if a homeowner comes home, there's a giant tag on it that says, we didn't pick this up because there was a car in front of it. Now, keep in mind by contract, if Wednesday's your trash day, they have Thursday to pick it up as well, so there is a window in there. But after that.
And beyond that though, and I think what Blake was partly getting at, this is something they used to do, this is something they're supposed to do, and they ran out of the cars and it took them a while to get them back in, and they're now doing them again. So that's a little different than the other issue, which is that starting an education campaign to let people know that these kinds of things will not be picked up at the curb. So you're not supposed to have trash bags in with your limbs and brush, you know? There was at least one in my neighborhood, but they went ahead and picked it up this week anyway. But they're trying to play catch-up, they know they're behind, but once they get reestablished, and that's what they really need to do, is educate our customers on what they should do and shouldn't do. Great job, Robert.
So I'm not sure what we're going to do with this, right?
And that's fine, we don't have to have that answer today. What we, what we're trying to do is just prepare you guys for the things that we do know about or suspect at this time.
I, I truly think that we've got to start putting some limitations in place in bulk. I know we have a contract, I know it's seven years, I know it's unlimited bulk, but this cannot continue. You know, we keep saying it's a one-time event. Well, this is the third year in a row we've had major issues with bulk. And I, I, you know, I think we got to do something.
We might take a cue from FEMA. If you remember back during the disaster, they had a really nice graphic that they made.
Those are the dollars.
Here's, here's what to do with all of your tree, where here's how to put it, here's what's acceptable, here's what's not. So if we start a campaign like that, create our own, our own graphic, that would be.
I think a graphic's better, but I'm talking about limitate, limiting bulk.
Well, that, that.
Yeah, I, I agree with that.
It's got to be.
You know, once a month and you can't have it out there ahead of time and we've, we've trained our citizens that they can do anything they want to do at the curb and it can't continue.
It makes the city look trashy.
And I see so many people that, that trim trees, that, you know, like the graphics from FEMA, you know, that bulk couldn't be over a curb, it couldn't be over a sidewalk. And I mean, you can't, you can't park three feet out from where those limbs are, you can't walk down the sidewalk. I mean, it's just like covering one and a half yards of, of frontage.
And it's clearly contractors.
Yeah, right, and it's contractors and the word is out to the contractors. I can tell you right now that they're like, they're leaving all the stuff, all the fence companies that redo fences, they leave it all there for.
So you pick up bulk once a month, that stops.
Yep. And that you can only have it out there for, you know, one, one cycle of the trash.
But we also signed a contract with unlimited bulk and sold it to our public that we're signing this contract at this price for unlimited bulk, so we're, we're like between a rock and a hard place.
So maybe we can renegotiate with, with FCC and gets our pricing reduced if we reduce the amount of bulk that they have to pick up.
I think they would have a motivation to do that.
We got to do something, this can't continue for another four years.
It can, it looks awful too.
I have bulk, I went with Matt has bulk and I go put it on top of his pile.
There you go.
But I, wouldn't they be motivated to, to.
I, I think they may because for, for the most part, you know, here's the deal, what, what, what trash companies hate is this.
Yeah.
They like is this.
Sure.
You know, that, that's what they prefer.
Who doesn't?
But, you know, every year, we have several storm events. And sometimes it's only on isolated areas, sometimes it's not even that big of a deal, sometimes it's ice mageddon. And I'm not, you know, about tornadoes and stuff, I'm just talking about the stuff that happens every year anyway. And so our public, you know, they, they do a great job taking care of their property. We know that, I mean, it's, it's just a fantastic thing that they do. And we also know through code enforcement that even when we notify them when there is an issue, that 85% of them take care of it. So, you know, they're motivated to take care of their property, which I think is a great sign for Rowlett, but it comes at a consequence. And that is that when somebody clears out three or four dozen trees in her packed yard and they put it out there, who, who, how in the world can they get that and still keep up with their normal stuff?
Yeah, that's, that's one load.
So good conversation about that. You know, I think, you know, our point tonight was to show you that contractually, this is the issue that we're, we're dealing with, that will impact them. And then that was really going to be it for tonight, Mayor. And then, of course, Friday and Saturday, we've got some pretty cool stuff that we'll, that we'll talk about. And in the meantime, we will compile the results, prioritize the list, and we're going to send that to you before our strategy session. And then, like I said, at the end of the two days, I am going to ask, ask for some assessment of where we think the top, whatever it is.
We are returned?
All right, thank you, Mayor.